Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start our regular council meeting. Welcome tonight. We'll begin with opening remarks invitation offered by Paul Crook and then we'll have a pledge of allegiance by a good buddy of mine, Mr. White.
Our Father in Heaven, we're indeed grateful for the opportunity we have to be here to figure out the best ways to help the people in Hickory which we ask that they might be, in the name, we might be able to keep our minds clear that we'll be able to make the best decisions and we say this name, the Son Jesus Christ.
Repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, need a motion to approve the agenda and timeframe. Second, Paul Crook seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, all right. Public forum.
I'm wondering if it's possible to get some do not park in the turnaround signs on Salem Hills Drive. It's been a problem over the past 10 years, but not frequently, but with elders building, unless they're gonna stand up there all day, every day, I couldn't even access my house. If I'd had a fire on Friday or a medical emergency, you know how it would've been able to get to us. And even the mail truck couldn't turn around Saturday. This morning, I was praying they would pick up my garbage, they had to go clear down the street and back in to get my cans. And until it's through street, can we please put some do not park 24/7 signs in there? It would really help.
Let's put that in a discussion, we gotta make something happen there, cuz that can't happen. Right? So, yes. Any other public comment? Okay. All right, we'll go ahead then and move on to line, to item number one, welcome and procedural training for our council members, welcome. Like a special welcome to David Jean and Jared Peterson. It's not on the agenda. We better do a roll call after this.
After the welcome.
So, welcome. Appreciate you guys stepping up and providing public service and Paul as well. Appreciate you being here once again and working with council. We'll go ahead and do a roll call and then I'll give some little bit of training out of the book and then we'll go on, so let's go ahead and Paul, we'll begin with you.
Paul Crook.
Tricia Thomas.
Ty Ellis.
Nelson Abbott.
Jared Peterson.
David Jean.
Thank you. All right, let me just go over a couple things out of this book. All right, so why are we here? Three purposes, first and foremost of the local government is to provide services, water, sewer, garbage, those kind of things, right? That's number one, why we're here and it's good to know these things so that we don't get, we don't trip up on ourselves thinking that we're doing good when we're not doing good, so it's important. Second, our residents wanna have a place that they're from, right? This is why we're not gonna give away the city celebration, right? Because that becomes part of who we are, that becomes part of the Elk Ridge experience and that's one of the things that we wanna make sure, so as a role of our, of the officials is to make this place special, right? So we need to work on that. And then the third thing is the, is the, um, is to have local control, right? And local government can be the most intrusive government and the most coercive and we know that, because we struggle with that in a lot of decisions that we make. Says, "While land use control is an important issue with cities and towns, it should never become the primary purpose and focus of local government." It's more of a necessary evil if you ask me. Two maxims should, should be considered when using power, first, just cuz you can do it doesn't mean you should and second, just cuz you got away with it doesn't make it right. So we wanna make sure we keep this in our brain as we go and do these things. Always about, our emphasis is always about providing those services at reasonable cost and building a community that's welcoming and most everything, so. You oughta know that the reason why we exist is cuz the state legislature said we could. It's not the same as the federal government. Federal government should exist only because we've said it can exist, but with this local government, we actually are allowed to exist because the legislature allows us to exist, right? So it's a little bit different, you don't wanna get whacked out on, on thinking that we have some exempt from the state, so we don't. We talked about water tonight. Providing water beyond your municipal boundaries is dependent on whether, cuz we're talking about this, is dependent on whether you or not you have water in excess of what your own residents needs. It should only be what is called in the law surplus water. So when we talk about giving pace in water, we're saying, "We have surplus water." It's a different way to look at it.
Which we don't right now, but.
Different way to look at it. How you determine that? I thought that was interesting read when I came across it because of the fact that we're talking about. I'm not gonna go through all this, there's so much in here. Do you know what form of government we have?
It's a republic.
No, I mean city, city government. Cuz there are specific city, forms of city government that the state legislature allows you to operate.
We did learn this in that meeting.
Yeah.
And I can't remember, but I remember, I remember learning that.
Okay. So a common cause of conflict is misunderstanding the form of government that the city or town is operating under. So we should know what our form of government is. Another common cause of dispute amongst us is gonna be misunderstanding the office in which we're elected to.
So what kinda government do we have?
We are a, we are a mayor and five council member government, mayor and a five council form of government. Which is different than a mayor council government, don't get confused cuz that one's been written out of the constitution, so. Mayors elected, mayors, oh, let me hold on. The power of mayors of cities and towns that are operating under a five or six member council form of government, that's us, falls somewhere between a mayor that basically runs the whole thing and a mayor that doesn't do anything, which are two different, two different. Some cities have a city manager and the mayor is just kind of a figurehead, right? Literally, kicks the babies and cuts the ribbons.
That's a Pason.
Not Pason. And, and cities that were formed under that are grandfather dear. And these different kinds of.
And they're looking at changing that.
So, are they?
Yes.
So mayors in this thing can either be kings or pawns depending on local ordinances. I'm a member of the legislative body and chief executive, but I don't have a vote.
Unless there's a tie.
Right? Which I really like. We can by ordinance delegate some of my mayor executive powers to managers and administrators and also delegate some of the duties to the council members if we, if we so desire. So that's, that's the type that we operate under. The only time I vote is if there's a tie and that would require one of you or three of you to be gone, three, couldn't do it at all, three.
That's true.
All right. Another source of conflict in city council with, with city council members who don't work well and play with others, a council member is a member of a committee, so you're gonna have to take your lumps and live with it and, you know, not everybody every time is gonna agree with the way you see it, so we should all know our duties and responsibilities and live within those boundaries. Here's some, um, general aforism that may help avoid some of these conflicts. All elected officials are worthy of respect, even the ones dumb enough to disagree with you. Right? It's unfair to expect members of the public to know what you know or understand what you tell them.
Wait, understand what you tell them? That's unfair of me to.
Depends on how much time you're willing to spend with them, right? Or how much time they're willing to learn. Your job descriptions does not include the phrase, "Full credit, no blame, win graciously, accept your losses, move on, enjoy correcting your own mistakes as much as you do others, praise in public and reprimand in private, do your own job first and always assume others are acting in good faith." So that's a, that's a great thing. I, I think that, what's that?
This wasn't audio, anybody, I don't have some audio.
Yeah, he's funny, he's funny when he talks.
So that's just a few things that we need to get you to go and make sure you go through that cuz there are a lot of good information in there. I think one thing I wanna make sure that we understand too is that the position on, our positions don't authorize us to utilize any city equipment for personal use or facilities or anything like that, right? This has not become our personal facility just because we're a member of the city council or, or a mayor. Fair enough? And that really applies to all city employees as well, right? Now there are some things that we, we allow, we may rent out something or do something like that, right? And the other thing is that you have to realize in this position that the mayor is the chief executive officer of the city, responsible for all the administrative stuff that goes on in the city, so what that doesn't authorize you to do is to think that you can stop along the side of the road, grab one of our public works guys and say, "You go over here and do this." No council member has that authorization to do. If you want to see something different in public work or a staff or whoever, right? It's really easy to use public work, it's like that's, that's the only thing we have in our city, so, but come and talk to me, right? If you find a dispute amongst yourself, something that's bothering you, come and talk to me, let's, let's work through it privately before it becomes a public issue, right? We all know what happens when things can get public when they don't need to become public. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we should be in a united front, that's what you're trying to say, right?
We, with our own opinion.
Yeah, and you're entitled to your own opinion, but you, then you say this, you know, talk to them to explain this.
And I think, I think from the time I've been mayor, we've been.
We've been good, no, we do.
Really good.
I really feel like we, we are.
Right, so I've been looking forward to working with these two new gentlemen here and fitting right in and moving forward, but I just wanna kinda, you know, this is, we have a lot of state laws and regulations that we have to be aware of and live by and, and a little less concerned about procedural mistakes on the council cuz we can, oh, you know, aren't we supposed to have a roll call vote? Yeah, well, sorry, I've been doing this for a year and a half. Royce, is there anything else I wanna say?
I have something I wanna say.
Yeah, go ahead.
As we're doing minutes, which some are gonna be approved in just a minute or two, we want to make sure, we always look at it, 10 years down the road, if we're reading these, does it make sense? And a lot of times we'll have comments where over there or something, we need to, and then as people are calling the audience, that we understand their name, I'm hoping the mayor will say, "Council member," you know, that we understand which council person is speaking, that we get better at that, cuz some of those, you would not know 10 years down the, what that all means.
No, it's actually pretty interesting.
And I'll be calling out, you would ask.
So let's, let's try to make sure that when we, when we do address the, you know, talk that we are, don't over, talk over each other and it's clear who's speaking and.
And sometimes overstating like project, if we're talking to development, you know, state the development, the more, sometimes we need more repetition on what we're talking about.
You need a red flag, gonna say like, ah, what do you? Okay.
We're a nerve gun.
Anything else, Royce, that we need to do right now or can we just?
No, we do minutes.
Let's just go ahead and move on. Anybody else wanna add anything before we move this topic?
Are we gonna do this every time, go over a couple things?
No.
I mean, if we're not busy, I kinda liked it, you know, just reminding us of things that kind of.
There's a lot of good information in there about what we should and shouldn't be doing, so. Okay, um, resolution, certified city legislative body. So Royce went in to get you all on to the check signing, no, what was it, tell me.
Yeah, we're, we're opening some accounts, we're changing signatures on, on some of the accounts and I just need something in minutes that show that people on the council have the authority to make those decisions. We need to do that by resolution.
So we have a resolution here that we passed and so this is all about, so let me just read it. Certifying city legislative body, which includes Ty Ellis, mayor, and city council as follows, Nelson Abbott, Trish Thomas, Paul Crook, Jared Peterson, David Jean and David Jean's authority to exercise their municipal powers in financial and contractual obligations. Also confirming city recorder as Roy Swenson and city treasurer Jan Butler. Anybody have an issue with that?
Just states the obvious, right?
State the obvious. Well, I already asked him, well, we kinda approved the election results, right?
Yeah, but we gotta have this on file so that when he goes in to do the paperwork, they'll accept it.
Right, exactly. So, I need a motion to pass resolution.
Basically read that with resolution.
Eighteen oh one oh nine one R.
All right. Make a motion, we pass resolution eighteen dash oh one dash oh nine dash one R, certifying city legislative body, which includes Ty Ellis, mayor and city council as follows, Nelson Abbott, Trisha Thomas, Paul Crook, Jared Peterson, and David Jean's authority to exercise their municipal powers in financial and contractual obligations, also confirming city recorder Roy Swenson and city treasurer Jan Butler.
Do I have a second for this resolution? David Jean seconded it, we need to have a roll call vote on this. We'll go ahead and start with Paul. Tricia.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Jared.
Aye.
And David.
Aye.
All right, resolution passes. Wow, that, that ends our business, we now have three sets of minutes to, to have this tonight. Any discussion on the November fourteenth minutes?
Just a second.
No, my name was correct. Thank you.
It even talks about me correcting.
Must've been a correct generation. What, uh, one of these, the word is wrong and we've got Mustang and for the word, it should be Mustang and I can't remember which one, I had it on my tablet and, I forgot to grab it. And it was on the first page, give me a second.
So we'll have three vote and two that we'll have to stay in, right?
So Troy built Mustang and a John Deere mower.
Where, yeah, November twenty first, so let's do November fourteen, any thing on November fourteen, if there's not, we'll, please make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes for the council meeting of November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Paul Crook seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Two abstentions. All right, now we go to the twenty first, Nelson.
Okay, so on the twenty first, when we talk about surplus equipment, we've got, it says a Troy built Mustang and a John Deere mower, I think it's supposed to be Troy built mower.
No, Mustang is the model of the Troy built mower.
Mustang mower then?
Troy built Mustang mower? That would help, yeah.
It's like they have a horse and a pony and a Mustang.
It is a mower, right?
Yeah.
Why just?
Mower, however you want.
That's fine, so just for clarity.
Just for clarity.
And mower behind Mustang?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Apparently.
Yes. That was a, that was a meeting.
That's when I showed up in sweats.
Couldn't have that in here.
I didn't know it was a meeting.
Okay, so. Anybody wanna move on this?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes from November twenty first, two thousand seventeen, let the correction, Nelson.
Okay, have a second?
Aye.
Somebody seconded it?
I was just trying to get it in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Two abstentions, okay, December twelfth. I'll take a motion anytime.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes of December twelfth, two thousand seventeen.
Second? Paul seconded this one, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Two abstentions. That is the conclusion of our regularly scheduled program, so if we can get a motion to close, adjourn this and go into continued work session. Actually, I don't think we have a work session, other than we were gonna discuss the city's pressing needs with them unless somebody else has it, but let's go ahead and close this and go ahead and.
I'll make a motion and go ahead and adjourn.
Have a second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're done.
We can update on what?
Yeah, we can.
It appears so.
Let's, let's get these guys and then they can, then they can leave and I, I'm excited to hear your guys' opinion of what's pressing on the city, cuz I don't have that through by myself. We're done. But now you had some questions, right?
Earlier I thought, I thought you were talking about a lawn mower.
That went right on by. Hey, you were listening, you were listening.
One of the things that the scouts would like to talk about in a couple weeks is, is what are, what are the most pressing items that the city council has to rate? If you had to rate them and say number one was.
Current, current item? Resilient.
Water, growth, whatever.
Yes and yes.
The growth, don't you think, making sure that it's.
The growth and balancing that with the budget.
So you're talking to these guys?
Yep.
So will you?
We do see how much we're growing, you know, that's a big concern, making sure.
The city.
Yeah, the city, more hope.
More threat. What does that mean when you say we just have property taxes?
Well, your parents pay money to own a house in the city and that's all we have to begin with. Like Payson has all the stores and stuff, they get tax paid, we don't have any of that, so we have, we're limited on funds.
Did you know that when you go in and buy a, buy a candy bar or something and you set it down and they charge a tax, right? A chunk of that tax goes to the city in which that store is at, so when you go to Walmart and you buy something in Walmart. It's in, with Walmart, it's in Payson, right? So Payson gets a percentage of your, of your tax that you paid, right? Elk Ridge, we don't have any, you don't, what do you buy in Elk Ridge?
Flowers.
Everything on Amazon.
Just stuff on Amazon, right?
Wait, you guys have an Amazon thing?
We don't have any.
At your own home, on your name.
Yeah, we don't have any stores, so where do we get, where do we get the money to run our city? It's from property taxes, which your mom and dad's just paid a couple months ago, right? And so as a city, we have to operate very differently than a city that has.
Stores.
Stores.
Yes.
Right? Because we don't get all that money, we have to live on a much smaller budget.
Have you guys ever considered, did you like a gas station? You don't have all the money in the world.
I don't know if ever anybody would ever put one up.
Well, the city's not really in a position to create a gas station in a prize fund and that's another revenue source that we have for the city, you've got the water, the sewer, garbage collection, and we generate a little bit of revenue there that is then used to pay for the wages of the employees that run the city, so city recorder, our city, our public works department, they maintain the parks and they take care of all these things for us. And that's how we, how we associate some of that, I mean, we do have revenue that comes in, in the form of BNC road funds, which is when your parents own Gassecaro, there's a tax that's charged on the gas, a portion of that comes back to the city to help maintain our roads.
So when you see somebody vandalize, right, our parks or something, guess who gets to pay for the fixing all that up?
Most of the time it's all us.
Your property taxes your mom and dad's pay.
Yep, and if we're spending money there, then we're not spending it somewhere else.
Like when they vandalized the church?
No, it's not the church.
Well, that was the churchy.
But it's the city. Wait, somebody vandalized a church?
Yeah, they're like, maybe like some handbooks.
So those are the issues, what we have, growth, just lots of houses, there, new houses are coming in, new roads, right? All those things have to be plowed and swept and.
So do you guys have like anything to do with the roads or is that this other, like the government's fault?
The roads in the city?
Within the city.
It's the city's responsibility to maintain and clear those. Also with growth comes increased needs for law enforcement. This last year, we went from a part-time sheriff to a full-time sheriff, just based on the number of calls. When you pick up a phone, you call dispatch and say, you know, somebody just vandalized my house, cut my big inflatable snowman up, or the neighbor's dog barking, or there was an accident in the intersection out from my house. The other thing that the city provides, we have a fire department, fire and EMS. I'm on the fire department, Dave's on the fire department, we're volunteers, we provide services, if there's a fire or somebody gets hurt, then the volunteers come in and help make that work because we don't have the revenue to pay for full-time fire and EMS in the city as well.
All of that went way over my head.
Well, if you ever have a fire and you hear Darth Vader, don't run from him, it's not Darth Vader, it's probably just one of us with our masks on coming into the fire. It sounds like Darth Vader.
I don't think Darth Vader would save you.
No.
He probably wouldn't.
Unless he was your father.
Any other questions? Any other questions? We're gonna move on. Great, and if you wanna ever get ahold of me for scout stuff, just go ahead.
Thanks for your time.
You want an update on?
I'd like to know.
On the well?
How that finally shook out, I could see the, the rig.
I saw that it's gone.
The rig is gone, I wanna know how flush they got it.
We, we actually ended up, at the end of, at the end of the development there, we ended up extremely successful on that. Um, we were able to do the 24-hour pump test, we ran it 24 hours at a thousand gallons a minute, um, we sustained the 200 and, about 300, 300-foot pumping level, which means the stags didn't drop down below the 299 mark, which is good, um, our sand content was 0.3 at the end of the, uh, 24 hour. So, um, DEQ water standard is 0.5, so the well ended up a couple of decimals under what we can be. Water samples were pulled, sent off, I haven't got the results back from the state on those yet or from the laboratory to see where we're at as far as cleanliness of the well and everything like that, but there was no indication of anything, I mean. there was no indication of anything, I mean, it cleared up, took some time, had a lot of sand coming out of it, a lot of silt. It eventually did clean up and we should get a thousand gallons a minute out of that well, so...
And how does that compare to the? Well, what used to be called a flowered well, there's another name for it now, but how does that?
Highline or clower.
Yeah.
So, the clower well's pumped about thirteen hundred gallons a minute, so it's just a hair, couple, two or three hundred gallons a minute under what the clower through highline is doing, so...
I think when we drilled the test well, we were anticipating eight hundred.
Yeah, we were, and at one point, we were, things were slightly dismal and we were looking more like we might be in the six to seven hundred range, so. Right there at the end, it kind of, everything cleaned up and came out of it and we got a really good rating, like I say, we were, everybody was kind of thinking that we'd end up in that eight hundred range, even before, like I say, when we were doing the test well, we were hoping, we were going to be happy with eight hundred, so. Now, the state will cut that back a little bit to give you your, you know, we still pump it at a thousand gallons a minute, just not as prolonged of a period of time, so they'll just kind of cut us back a little bit on that, but yeah.
When will we, when will we get our state, that number back to the state, you know, if we actually, because we've put the paperwork in now to get approval for pumping, right?
Yeah, yeah, everything, um...
Do you know when that comes back?
I haven't heard from Robert from Aqua Engineering, not yet. Yeah, yeah, but I've, I've got a meeting with Robert tomorrow, and so I can bring that up with him and see when he thinks we'll get all that state mandated, paperwork taken care of. Part of the meeting with Robert tomorrow is, of course, to start discussing our pump house.
For Robertson engineer from Aqua who's been overseeing our well project.
Yeah.
Yeah, but he works underneath Craig now.
Yeah, yeah, he is. Yeah, so Robert's the younger one, younger, not that Craig's old, but Robert's, Robert's the little younger one that he is, he's, Craig's like kind of the assistant city engineer, I guess you'd say. So, he's kind of the one that's over the project, so he'll be down tomorrow. We're going to sit down and start discussing building, what size of motor, pump, those kind of things that we'll be equipping this well with. Start setting the game plan to get it tied in and get the building and infrastructure built and put in, so...
One of the questions that I've got is related to our capital facility. Because everything is driven by the number of connections, but that's based on an assumption that a well would produce X amount of water. I would assume they're going to go in and massage the numbers where they need to. If it moves up the timeline, then we need the next well, or pushes it out as part of this process, I mean, I would assume that something's gonna happen.
Yeah, um, kind of the good, the good thing is, as far as the water system goes, we have met our, what the state says we can hold in storage, what the amount of water we can store, so as far as tanks and stuff go, we, we're at a hundred percent on our storage capacity for tanks. The well was one, creating the redundancy is, was the issue with the well. So, having this third well into where we can pump into the tanks, we're not going to see any more, more storage or more use of water. We shouldn't see that number go up. I get what you're saying.
Right, I mean, it's just...
As far as another well goes. But I, I think even with the two wells that we do have and this third one being more of a redundant source instead of a...
Yeah, because we pump like four hundred more homes or something on the one we already had. Or, don't you remember that, when it broke and they said, "We need a new one for a long time," and they were just like, "No, actually, we could technically..."
It was, I think, fifteen hundred.
We, we could put more on just than what we have, right?
I don't remember the number, I remember...
I'm terrible with numbers.
That's in the capital facilities plan.
But, we already could, we could put a lot more houses on the, on the one we had, right?
Yeah, it was...
Sixteen hundred or so connections.
It was a fair amount that we could...
So, maybe I did make the numbers.
Put more on that well. So, as far, as far as the wells go, I mean, we're at our storage for, unless things annex in south and start, you know, really developing up there. We've met our storage, we are still within our limits of our two operating wells, now this third will be redundant. So, kind of long story drawn out short here, I, I think it'll be quite a while before we have to look at doing another well.
Do you, do you have any idea when we would want to do maintenance on the upper well? Because that one thing this redundant well gives us, right, is the opportunity to take that upper one offline now.
So...
Right, and we don't want to have a repeat.
We don't?
Right?
Right.
We will never, we, we should not have the outage, the water restrictions.
Right.
But we don't want the well to like blow up before we...
Sure, and that's, that's the best part about this, having the third, so two thousand fifteen, the Lofer Canyon well was replaced a hundred percent new.
Oh, it was?
Yeah, new motor, everything's done. So, two thousand sixteen, we did a VFD upgrade, which is in relation to the controls of the pump and motor, uh, which made it more efficient, we run it faster, better, more efficient, yada, yada. As far as for the Lofer Canyon well goes, there's a lot of water up there that we can access, that we can utilize with development of the well. As far as equipment goes, we're sitting really well, we're sitting, we're sitting good as far as equipment goes. But development in the well would be our next.
Our next move.
Our next move at Lofer.
That's a good well.
It is, we sit in an alluvial, an alluvial, basically an underwater river that runs right through there. And if we can develop that out more and kind of, kind of mine the bottom of the well out and get that.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a higher well, so it's cheaper to pump the water.
It's cheaper to pump. So, so that would, that would be, as far as the well for goes, that'd be my recommendation, is we start looking at development of the actual well. For the equipment goes, we're sitting pretty well with that one, sitting good.
I knew it, two thousand sixteen.
And we got a replacement too.
Any other, any other staff questions you want to? Because you know, usually we go through, usually go through departments, but...
Sorry, excuse me, scratch your throat, I've been sick for weeks in my house.
We have the new snowplow yet?
We do.
Okay.
We do, um, yeah, it's...
Can't you tell, there's no snow.
Do not complain, this is the best winter ever.
I'm praying for like a five-foot snowstorm.
Are you insane?
That law came with some of that, we're brave, on that Christmas show, what is it?
Frosty and the snowman, the spray is...
Yeah.
Spray the snow in the...
Snow no more stuff.
We bought all that with this plow.
I'm in favor of that, that's best.
Murphy's, that was, that was according to the Murphy code.
And it came in under budget.
Came in under budget. Yep, pretty fairly well under budget, so prices of things have gone down and we got a better deal on it.
We went with the stainless bet on that, didn't we?
Yeah.
That's a nice, that's a nice unit.
Yeah, you guys all have to stop by and...
It'll last us a lot of good years now.
It's amazing to see...
Twenty-one hundred that the snow's coming down now.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes!
It's amazing to see the technology between the old, I mean, you have the ninety-six out here, and you have the two thousand eight, and you have this new one. I mean, the plow is just, I mean, it's this whole, it's this whole unibody lift and it, I mean, it's, things you can do, you can float the blade, the plow blade itself, you can put pressure on it so it's not just pushing down on the road. You can kind of lift it up and it'll just kind of glide over the road and, I mean, it kind of float as you go and, I mean, it's, it's crazy to see all the, all the upgrades they've made, all the, all the changes that have been made in it, so... Yeah, we're excited to have it.
Anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, thanks everybody, I appreciate you being here.